Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States.
Black power.
And to the republic which we stand.
Black power.
One nation.
Black power.
God.
Black power.
In this court with liberty and justice.
Black power. Black power.
I was. Um.
End of our. Line one.
Councilmember Dayes.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fish.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Trankis.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have a quorum.
Very well. The Journal of the Meeting of October 29th has not yet been finalized, so we will move to bid openings. We have no bid openings tonight, this evening, so we'll move on to communications.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road bridge matters this evening, so we will move to other communications. Under Other Communications, item number one.
Very well. Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion through item number five, and that will be the order.
Item number six, fifth district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number seven, fifth district.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number eight.
Receive, file, and the appropriate transfers for items eight through 10 be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 11.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion through item number 13, and that will be the order.
Item number 14, second district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 15.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 16.
Receive, file, hold on the Order of Business and report to the council as a whole, and that will be an order. I mean, same motion through item number 22, and that will be the order. Sorry about that.
Item number 23.
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request or proposal be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 24, second district.
Receive, file, and the change of doing business name be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 25, second district.
Receive, file, and the expansion of premises be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 26, second district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 27, fourth district.
Drop on the order of business, please.
So ordered. Please read the add-ons.
Are they under communications? Item number one.
Receive, file, and the appointments be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, and the appointees are accepted, or approved.
Item number two, seventh district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number three, fourth district.
Receive, file, and refer to the St. Louis County Police Department.
So ordered.
Item number four.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Report to the county executive.
Thanks, Ernie, and good evening, everyone. As I mentioned many times, one of the goals of our office has been to make government work well for everyone, and a big part of that work has involved boards and commissions. When I became county executive six months ago, my staff and I discovered that on our 74 boards and commissions, we had 350 members serving on expired terms and another 100 vacant seats. We have filled 50 of those positions since I took office, and I have one staff member working on this full-time. It's a huge task, but it's something we have to tackle. County government is much bigger than the eight of us sitting up here. Those who serve on our boards and commissions help shape our government and make it work for everyone. They help us create a more inclusive place to work. They help us make sure that St. Louis County is the right place where businesses to bring new jobs and new opportunities. I'm confident that Judge Ray Price and Michelle Schwerin are the right choices to begin making leadership changes in the police department. Our police department must be a place where every community member and every police member is treated with dignity. Employment decisions must be made based on merit and who is best for the job. Police department leadership must ensure that St. Louis County is a safe place. Police department leadership must provide an opportunity for its employees to do their jobs and to have uninstructed paths to advancement. Police department leadership must assure the community that those who are sworn to protect and serve are doing so for everyone in every corner of the county. Police department leadership must reflect our community, and it must be diverse, it must be inclusive. It must understand that we all walk different paths and we all have different struggles. I'm happy the council confirmed Ray and Michelle so we can move forward with the beginning of our leadership change, and I hope my colleagues sitting up here with me today will confirm any nominees that I may send in the next few weeks. Last week, the police board voted to hire an outside firm to analyze the police department's hiring practices. That's a good start, but it's only a start. We won't allow one lawsuit to define who we are as a county and who we are as a police department. We can do better, and we will do better. Inclusion must be the hallmark of county government, and it will be as long as I'm sitting up here. The police department, the police board, has tremendous power, and with that power, a tremendous opportunity to make sure that we have a police department absent of any hint of a culture of intolerance. When the Board of Freeholders convenes later on this month, it too will have a tremendous opportunity before it. An opportunity to reimagine how local government can lead to outcomes more favorable for all of our residents. How can we be better? How can we work together on common interests, economic development, public health, and public safety? These questions require thoughtful consideration as the Board of Freeholders process unfolds. Thanks to the council, all nine of the county appointees have been confirmed and are ready to go to work. On Friday, I sent a letter to the new members of the Board of Freeholders, and a week from today, they will begin their deliberations. I did ask that they not move forward with any substantive decisions until the county members of the Board of Freeholders are seated. I don't think our region would have confidence in their work until they're all seated together, and frankly, I wouldn't either. But I've encouraged the county representatives to think about how best to engage our diverse community, particularly those often underrepresented and left out altogether. No matter the path forward, process must be one that is transparent, inclusive, and equitable. Otherwise, it would be difficult for me or anyone in the county to accept their work product. Thanks to you, all of you, as we work together better for all of St. Louis, challenges along the way are to be expected. It's how we move through those challenges that really defines us and determines our success. Thanks, Ernie.
Thank you, Sam. Report to special committees. I think committee will continue to hold out on the Order of Business, public forum. Tonight, we have 30 speakers, so again, I'm going to encourage you, if you're with a group and you have the same message, that perhaps you select two or three people to deliver your message. That's your option, of course, but I would encourage you to do so. Also, strongly encourage everyone to show respect to the speakers. Let them say what they want to say, and I would ask that you, you know, keep your applause and other comments to yourself, and let these folks come up and say what they need to say. Because of the number of speakers, I'm going to hold every speaker to a hard three minutes, as I did last week. I will give you a 30-second warning, so you'll know that I'm in your last 30 seconds, but at three minutes, I will have to ask you to conclude. So with that, Madam Clerk, go ahead and call the first speaker.
And Mr. Presiding Officer, we will call the first speaker and then the one following.
Very well.
First speaker, Garrett Mees, followed by Shushi L.
Hello again this evening. You know, I put in a sunshine law request and got some information, and after watching the video of the meeting regarding Bill 270, ordinance 602, it was discussed, it was clear why maybe the rest of the dais has not stepped up to challenge the tobacco ordinance infraction that I've been challenging with regarding simple pleasures. Although for very good reason, the focus of the sale, on the sales to minors was the talk of the day. The problem is, it's not the sale of minor infraction that we're dealing with with simple pleasures. It's the sale to anyone due to proximity, probably why the new county councilor doesn't know how to argue that point in court. This is the same violation that keeps a strip club from being built next to your house. You know, first you hire an auditor, they can't audit, now maybe you hired an attorney that doesn't know how to litigate. When it comes to selective enforcement of county ordinances, I think Mr. Frakis has something to say about that.
And frankly, in my opinion, school districts have chosen purposely not to enforce their own regulations or do so on a selective basis. The simple fact of the matter is that this body's going to act, I intend to introduce a substitute bill incorporating some of the suggestions that were made today, and there will be an ordinance passed.
The irony here is, this is regarding the very ordinance that this county is not enforcing, and based on the original language of 716-225, could have and should have been, and it was referenced in last week's revelation that it needed to be referenced to prevent the licensure of this business in the first place. And ironically enough, it was taken out of the very notes of the very same meeting. In addition, as a nine-year veteran, school board member of the very district that this business is in violation with, I attest that the following comments from this young lady are very true, and the tone that Mr. Trankis' tone, that Mr. Trankis' tone is a slap in the face to every educator, administrator in this state, especially when you're allowing this business to sit directly in front of the district's athletic facility and across from a county park.
30 seconds, Mr. Mees.
Talking about coming into schools, putting the onus on school personnel to be swabbing, to be urine sampling, to be testing kids for nicotine on-site, I'll bet you dollars to donuts that if you ask any school teacher, administrator, assistant soup, they don't know how to do that. That is not something they're qualified to do, and they certainly do not want a county council telling them that that's something that they need to be doing.
I think they don't want a county council telling anything to do, okay? Every mentor school district has asked county with advice here today. Not one spoke.
Not one spoke, because they have to be very concerned about their funding and about image.
Let me finish.
Next speaker, Shushi L., followed by Linda Gogan.
I'm the mother of a loving son whose dimpled smile can bring sunshine to my darkest days. He's not just my son, but he is a husband, a fabulous father to the cutest little boy that just idolizes him, a confidant to his big brother, and a friend to too many to mention. He volunteers within his community, and he's on the board of numerous organizations. His profession is the head of a police officer, excuse me, for St. Louis County. It's not a job as most of it would think of, as most of us would think of, it's a calling, a passion to help other people. He puts his life on the line every day to fulfill that quest. Sometimes, he never even makes it into the precinct for roll call before he gets a call for service. He answers these calls all day long, sometimes over 30 in one day. But remember, these calls are for help from the community, from you, and you, and even He goes there no matter what. He doesn't care what your color or religion may be. He goes, and sometimes the things that he witnesses are horrific. He makes a split-second decision to rush a baby that stopped breathing to the hospital because the ambulance is seven minutes away and the hospital's only four minutes away. And that evening, he goes home and hugs his son so hard, and tears begin to flow from his eyes. Or he goes to a domestic violence call where one party is so glad to see him stop the beatings while the other party fights him and threatens to kill him. Or he goes into a home where five people have been murdered. Instead of running out like you and I would do, he checks vital signs for each one of them, and things like that you just can't unsee. And this goes on day after day after day. They see abused kids, they see dead bodies, they see horrible traffic accidents, and what that means is that the traumatic events and stressful events kind of build on one another. If you must put on a bulletproof vest before you go to work, there's an indication you're already under the possibility of being shot or killed. The stress can begin to take its toll, and that is why the police profession has the highest suicide rate of any profession, 134 as of August, a 24% increase over 2018. This commitment to help others comes with some other hardships. He is no longer treated as an individual. He is now referred to as a department. To the media, please choose your words carefully. Don't put the blame on my hard-working, risk-taking son for actions that he has no control over. There is already a faction of the community that hate police, and your reporting only fuels that fire. They are heroes, risking everything to make St. Louis County a better place to live. They trust each other with their lives. They are a family, brothers and sisters in blue. Let's give them the respect that they deserve. Let's work together to help our community come together, not to tear it apart.
I need you to finish, please.
Most people never get to meet their heroes, either first to mine.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Linda Gogan, followed by Shannon Tyrell.
I am a member of the Moms Back the Blue. When our sons and daughters are on their way to work, we are praying, stay safe, because the memory of Blake Snyder and others wearing the uniform like him are ever on our minds and our hearts. When they have completed their shifts, and we are thankful and grateful that they are safely returning to their homes and their families. We are the families of the men and women wearing the St. Louis County Police Department uniform. We are your neighbors. Our St. Louis County police officers answer every call that they are dispatched to with the knowledge that there are a lot of variables that could be at place, at play where that call takes them. They train, they prepare, and sometimes they may call, the call they may require them to have the wisdom of Solomon to determine who or what is the problem at the call. They do not shirk their duty. As mothers, we are both proud and fearful for our sons and daughters who have chose law enforcement as their profession. They do not, they did not choose it for money, glory, esteem, or recognition. They chose a profession that can instantly put themselves or another officer in danger. They go to the rescue of someone who needs, who feels in danger. They give help for those who can't help themselves. They look for the lost or the missing. They de-escalate a volatile situation. They see crimes that the rest of us hope we never have to see. They are the level head and the organizer in a tragic situation, and sometimes they are the comforter in that situation. And yes, they arrest those who are breaking and are not, and who have broken the law. Being on duty sometimes requires missing holiday celebrations, children's games, and special activities. They go to a call immediately, even if they are in the middle of eating. Police officers get cursed out, sometimes spit on, and always, there is the possibility of violence done against them. We remember Officer Langsdorf. In some of the communities they serve, they cannot order food because someone working there with an agenda against what their uniform stands for might spit on their food. Yet, despite the negative press and people, the men and women of the St. Louis County Police Department get up, put on their uniforms, and answer the calls, and their families stay, say, stay safe.
Thank you, Ms. Gogan.
Next speaker, Shannon Tyrell, followed by Anne Cashell.
Hello, councilmembers. I am Shannon Tyrell. I am a volunteer at the county shelter. I was here and I spoke last week. I listened to Spring address the council members and inform them that there would be no gap in volunteers from November 7th to November 8th, that there was a plan in place to hold several interviews and orientations on the 8th. I hope that she is true to her word, but no one has received acceptance letters to their application and offer to schedule an interview, even though volunteers have followed the process and have submitted their applications. I find it hard to believe that we will get acceptance letters, interviews, and orientations by November 8th. Spring also indicated at the first advisory board that, after the audit was released, that we would hire, have temporary walkers. I was very excited. So approximately three to four months later, at the same meeting last week, she announced that one had been hired yesterday. We haven't seen them yet, that doesn't mean that's not the case, I'm just saying we haven't seen them yet, but if you count the number of dogs we have access to, that's approximately 70, and if you take two quick, short, 10-minute walks per day, that includes leashing and kenneling and basically hustling, that comes to 1,400 minutes, 23 hours per day to give the required two short walks for an animal to pee and poo, not even exercise. So these two part-time positions are for 16 hours. If you do the math, you'll find that even these solutions fail to offer adequate, adequate for basic needs. Many volunteers are tired or exhausted, oh, I'm so sorry, let me back up. Forget the walkers, the bigger issue is, we don't even have veterinarians to neuter and spay animals that have adopters waiting for them. So here I'm talking about walkers when we don't even have educated veterinarians. So if we can't hire walkers, I don't even, in three to four months, how long will it take for veterinarians? Many of the volunteers are tired, exhausted, and feel despair. The problems that plague this shelter have been ongoing for years. There's a stanger blame, management blame, staff blame, volunteer blame, community blame, government blame. Blame and excuses are plentiful for the serious issues that plague this shelter, and common sense is lacking. However, you have a large group of volunteers who repeat mainly the same concerns week after week. Enough is enough. Taxpayers and animals are victims of the slow-moving dysfunctional shelter. Please enforce that volunteers are reinstated. Please advertise to nonprofits to take over this shelter. County has had plenty of time to turn this embarrassment around. I would like to have my peaceful Tuesday evenings back. Please do something today, not four months from now, so we can stop meeting like this.
Thank you, Ms. R.
Next speaker, Anne Cashell, followed by Isora Liggins.
My name is Anne Cashell, and I'm a volunteer at the animal shelter, at least for now. I find it absurd that we have had to hire a lawyer to fight for our rights to volunteer to walk dogs and pick up poop for free. Who is going to do that when we are gone?
Thank you, Ms. Cashell.
Good evening. Isora Liggins, 5320 Bemidro Road. Good evening, County Executive Page, Chairman Trankis, and the entire county council. I am deeply concerned by the email that came from the county council's office regarding my inability to speak with the county council or the county executive's office. I'm deeply concerned to find out if the county council was informed about this email that I received. Do the entire county council know that I have been told that I can no longer speak to the county council at the behest of the executive office? I thought that these were separate branches. So my question here, if I get a question, is Chairman Trankis, were you involved in this? Do you know that I have been denied my right to speak with the council? Do you know what this is about?
This is the first I've seen this, ma'am.
So Chairman Page, I mean Executive Page, don't talk to you, you just administer this stuff from your office, Executive Page. And when I contacted your council, she told me she didn't have to give me any information. When I asked for the rules, the regulations, the charter, the ordinance, your authority that allows you to make these decisions, I'm 65 years old. I don't need nobody sending me emails telling me I can't talk about my business.
Ms. Liggins, please direct your comments to the chair.
Well, I'm asking you, Mr. Chair, I'm disturbed, because first of all, there's a separation of power, and Mr. Page has only done this because he don't want to address the fraudulent document that came through his office.
Please keep your comments to yourself, sir. Thank you. No, I'm talking to you, sir. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Liggins.
Well, I'm deeply concerned with the attorney's attitude. I'm trying to resolve an issue. I didn't think that we, everything is confrontational. You would think that the attorney's office would have tried to get with me, tried to resolve this.
30 seconds, Ms. Liggins.
Okay, and I'm asking right now for this county to let me know, do I still have my rights? And I need to hear from your office. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you, Ms. Liggins.
Next speaker, Trudy Kohler, followed by Cornell Jones.
Good evening. My name is Trudy Kohler, and I want to start off by saying that I am not a volunteer at St. Louis County Animal Care and Control. I have not been asked to speak here today by a volunteer, nor am I speaking on their behalf. I am here to talk about how I got here. A little over two years ago, I lost my German Shepherd in a heavily wooded area after he was spooked by fireworks. This was, may not be as upsetting to some, but Major is more than just a dog to me. In 2010, I was diagnosed with post-traumatic stress disorder after being run over by a car. In the past, I have relied on him to help me manage the symptoms of this condition. After Major went missing, I was desperate. Not knowing where to start, I took to social media. I posted a message on Facebook asking for the community to help me find him. That Facebook paid post made its way to the volunteers who sit behind me here tonight. They shared my post, hung flyers, knocked doors, and helped search. These men and women did not know me, they did not know Major. The only thing they knew was someone in their community was asking for help, someone who just wanted to find her lost dog. These are the people who sit here today. 20 days later, with their help, I found my Major. I'm sharing this story as a testament to their selfless acts of kindness that can be seen daily when an animal is need, in need, and I hope you all see that through the frustration that comes out. I left my first council meeting ever last Tuesday with more questions than answers. I wanted to see for myself why so many were so mad. How can so many misinterpret the same message? So I started doing my own research, and it all started to make sense. Nowhere in the 2019 City Gate audit did they mention a reboot to the volunteer program. Instead, it recommends the opposite. On page 183, under the strategic plan, 10.2, item number two, titled, Recruit, Develop, and Retain a High-Quality Volunteer in Staff Workplace. Thank you. The priority, and it states, "The priority mainly consists of expanding the volunteer pool, increasing staff training and education." I'm also speaking of the claims made by local animal welfare advocates that too many animals were being euthanized. They begin that statement with, "Over the past few years." No wonder they're yelling. They feel like no one is listening, and it's clear that this is not the proper forum if answers is what we seek.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
[applause] Cornell Jones, followed by Linda Gogan.
Hello, councilmembers. I am Shannon Tyrell. I am a volunteer at the county shelter. I was here and I spoke last week.
Cornell Jones, followed by Millicent Williams.
Cornell Jones. Massa's descendants, 2.2, minus two Massa's captives. Last week I was here and I became very concerned as Mrs. Williams passionately recant the abuse that she received at the hand of one of the county's fans. As she indicated, they follow and probe her, even Satan wouldn't enjoy that. But what I hear to say is that we find these things that's going unchallenged, uncredited at all times. I found the problem last week was that out of all that disarray and dismay, one-third of the audience was here on behalf of dogs, cats, gerbils, chipmunks. Neither one of them had to have anyone come out here and speak for them. They were well spoken for. We had to scavenge the breach in the streets to get supporters to come out here and then, yes, Miss Lady right there, you called one of the speakers back because you wanted to know if a gerbil had his rights abridged, not once did you call Miss Williams.
Ms. Jones, please direct your comments to the chair.
To see how she was violated, but it's all coming around. Everyone has his day and it is on the way. We find that these things are going off. And I heard you say, Mr. Executive, the county wanted to be a right county. Add that word, you want to be a white county. That's where it lies and that's where it always been. As I said, you all are descendants of Massa. Massa's descendants and Massa enjoyed the fruits of his earnings. People like us, the police department, understand, it was born out of slave chasers and nigger recaps. All that was in order to, look at the laws right today. It was invented to protect and recover Massa's property. Ball one, look at the sentencing law. You can get more time for violating property than you would for hitting one of the subjects here. And that's why they go, these passionate mothers that have sons that are policemen, one thing they did not say, when they go arrive, one of the things I tell my white friends when they talk about it, no, all whites are not abridged or what have you.
30 seconds.
When you allow one to throw a brick, they come back and find havoc with you, you are just as guilty here. That's what it is. You do not come out with nothing and a cave in to the body. And that's where it lies. So when one does wrong, call it out for its wrongness and then that way you'll have a new agenda. But until you give him cover, then you are just the same as he is. So I say to you, Massa's descendants, wake up!
Time is up, Mr. Jones, thank you.
Next speaker, Millicent Williams, followed by Steve Montag.
Good evening, Ms. Williams.
Good evening to the councilwomen and men before me. My name is Millicent Williams and I've been coming here for about the last six weeks and I have told my story, the devastating story of the white officer that stopped me while I was driving to pull me over and I wouldn't adhere to his floodlights that he had put on, on my car. I went to a lit area, I explained the abuse that I received from this white officer and I'm sure any of you all, this is the point that I'm at now because I haven't gotten any good response, this officer is still working and he literally violated me, he literally sexually molested me on the parking lot. I have addressed this issue and I'm coming at a different angle now to say, no one has said anything about this officer who is still working. I have been traumatized. I received a call from Councilwoman Donaway today and I've been waiting on that call for the last six weeks. She explained to me how she felt about it, she sympathized how I feel and I'm with the man that came out just to speak on my behalf because I came back today to say, she never said a word to me, she never said anything or how she sympathized with the fact, how I was really literally molested by the white police officer that is still working. He violated all the rules and regulations. My husband went to police department over 40 years. I know the policies, but I know my rights as well. She never said a word to me to say, express how she felt and sympathize with how I felt. So I felt so bad with the fact, but she called me today, but I came because last week she going to dress about the dogs. I understand people love their dogs and they pass, I ain't got nothing against them. But she ain't never said not one word to me about how I've been molested. I mean, I literally told you all that he almost had me bend over and touch my toes. That's about how bad it was, but nobody never said a word to me about how I feel. They called me, this is the first call I got from my councilwoman, but I don't know what your laws procedures are. I came to present my case to say, could somebody say anything? So, Councilwoman, you ask me, what can you do? I want Officer Nicholas Newberry. He has the opportunity, he has the opportunity to do it again, he had to do it again. If it was a black officer and a white woman, he never would have been still working and this been since April. I came to the procedures and went to IAD or the proper procedures for the, for the investigation and I got no results. Bear in mind, say, he started for my aggravation, but I bet you if it was his wife, it wouldn't have been no aggravation if he had been found on the parking lot in the presence of a black man.
Time's up, Ms. Williams, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker, Steve Montag, followed by Michelle Scott.
I don't, I don't think she needs to come up, but I have a question for every woman in this audience. When I was 16 years old, which was 30-ish years ago, don't tell anybody, I remember being told by police officers that if it were late at night and I were being pulled over to drive to a safe and well-lit area before I stopped my car. And I have a question, was everyone else taught this lesson too? Why don't the, why don't the police know this lesson that their teaching of us? That is it, Mr. Providing Officer.
I see a white officer and he got those privileges to do what he wants. Let up in a black office, he's been fired immediately. Throw him under the jail, through the key door.
We'll have, we'll have order in here. We will have order in here. Have you remembered? Mr. Sheen, I need you to sit down and I need you to-
What are you calling me up? You're just holding up your, don't stop the negro. You got the white one tonight.
I need you to-
Don't call my goddamn name, I'm first. You're everybody, you're sleeping with the, everybody's shit. Don't sleep with me, I'm the front now, boy. I'm not one of them. Don't, I'm right there. Don't, don't, I'm calling the damn lady.
Do you interrupt?
You got the white nigga tonight. Don't play me.
Mr. Sheen, one more out first, I'm gonna have to have you.
I'm calling my damn lady, I'm calling her. White boy, you got the white one, buddy.
Who's the next speaker?
Steve Montag, followed by Michelle Scott.
Go ahead, Mr. Montag.
Hi, my name is Steve Montaggy and I, just for everyone here tonight, it happens everywhere, there are bad apples in every job across America and every, every position, we all probably know someone that probably shouldn't be doing what they're doing and that's for any, any job whatsoever in the world. So, I mean, if we can wean the bad ones out or possibly re-educate them, that would be great, so. I'm here tonight for about county animal control, I haven't been here since February, back during the one fox was euthanized because she had rabies, which we all know she didn't, so. And this new forcing of the volunteers to, to reapply, they have to get re-interviewed and background checks done, that sounds to me like the people in charge or running this place right now are just basically trying to get rid of all transparency. And if there's no whistleblowers there, they can say everything's running fine and just hide the numbers. I mean, the audit itself has shown for years, it's been sloppy and I think the volunteers need to stay there in this digital world of any, any updated policies or books, manuals or anything that's needed, they can all be emailed to all these volunteers and just keep the system flowing the way it is. There is no need to reapply, redo this. I mean, if they have all their email addresses, they should already have a history on all these people. I think orientation is absolutely ridiculous. It sounds more like a cover-up and it just to get rid of the volunteers, the staff is already, I mean, there's already, we're already short on staff. I'm not a volunteer there, by the way. I actually helped that lady over there who I didn't know at the time find her German Shepherd, Major, so I didn't know she was going to be here tonight either, so. I think all the, all the volunteers should keep the program going the way it is. They all get updated policies and emails sent to their own addresses, they have a 30-day digital time to sign and acknowledge the fact that they are up to date on all the new policies and procedures. And anyone new that actually wants to volunteer, let them go through the new orientation and everything else, but the way it is right now with this so-called reboot, I think we know, you know, between the tricking of the euthanasia rates on the checkbox a while back, all the vets have quit, low staff members and now they're trying to keep the volunteers away.
30 seconds, Mr. Montaggy.
Okay, thank you. With all that going on and the audit from the last couple of years, I think we know where the problem really is and I think upper management really needs to have a good, hard look taken to them.
Thank you, Mr. Montaggy.
Next speaker, Michelle Scott, followed by Queen Zaya.
This is my first time at a meeting, council's meeting.
Scott, we could approach the microphone.
This is my first time and to be honest-
You can pull it towards you if you like.
Okay, to be honest, when I came up, they said sign in. I thought I was just signing in because I was coming in. I, to be honest, but I agree with a lot of the things that I heard and, and with the county, I'm a city resident, it's, the county and the city needs, needs change. So with that, I'm not gonna take up much time, I don't know if I can give my time to someone else, to Zaki Baruti, but if so, I don't know if I got to me-
Ma'am, I'm sorry, you can't do that.
Okay, but I appreciate being here and I appreciate the, the animal volunteers because what they're, what they're here for, I agree with.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Next speaker, Queen Zaya, followed by Michael Dewing.
Good evening, Queen Zia Reddick, and I wanted to address the council here. I wanted to ask you, Mr. Page, you started out in your remarks about, you know, the two new members on the board and how integrity and respect, you use those words. Well, you know, as a citizen of St. Louis and resident of the county, you know, we ask for that same consideration, that same integrity and respect shown to us as, as citizens. Millicent Williams, 63 years old, on a, at 2:00 AM after visiting her, her son in a hospital. So she's already, she's already traumatized because she's dealing with a son that's been, that's in a hospital. And to be stopped for no reason that the officer gave, no arrest was made, but humiliation was done, degradation was done to her, and we are simply asking that fairness and integrity be given to her. Because she, you know, she's asking for that officer to be fired, not to be slapped on the wrist, because what are you all sitting to the community when you allow officers to do, who have, who displayed the type of behavior? Because actions speak louder than words. They swear an oath to serve and protect the community, not to harass and traumatize the community. And these mothers here, I, I, I am a ex-wife of an officer who served over 30 years for this, for the city of St. Louis. So I'm not anti-police, I'm not anti-police. I know there are some great officers out there, but we have to address the ones that do the deeds that, that this officer has done. When there is someone in our community that is not serving and protecting, it needs to be, it needs to be dealt with. And the woman, and you all have already said, the, the police, they, they, the investigation was done and the charges were sustained, but, but, but the consequences, where are the consequences for the officer? You know, when we, when we do wrong as citizens, you know, you want the community to come out and, and give, you know, if you witness something, you know, snitch is word or, or, you know, come forward. We're asking you guys to stand, stand with the community that elects you all, puts you and asks you all to do the right thing, show respect and kindness and integrity to this woman. Do the right thing and fire, 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 Officer Newberry. You know, you said there's, you talk about intolerance, we're, we're asking for justice and fairness.
It's open to see you, thank you very much. Thank you.
Next speaker, Michael Dewing, followed by Tashonda Trup.
Good evening, Mr. Dewing. Good evening. I'm here to speak out for the animals. They need your help. They need you guys to do something besides hoarding them and warehousing them and abusing them. And that is what the county has been doing. I listened to the end of the meeting last week. 360 animals approximately in there with capacity of 200. 160 animals more than you're capable of taking care of, that means you are abusing 160 animals. The county should have charges pressed against them for all of those animals. If you're not going to take care of them, don't take them. If you can't take care of them, close up. If you're not capable of doing this job, don't try to do it. This is unacceptable, this is unacceptable for everyone. We have dogs that need to get out of there. We have dogs that we've gotten out of there. There's dogs that are service dogs now. We have a trained service dog that according to animal control was aggressive, unable to deal with it. He's now, he's six months into his training, he's actually in Canada now as a trained service dog. See videos of him sitting in the dentist office, the ophthalmologist while being cared for, being patient, being what a dog should be. If you guys aren't capable of taking care of these animals, find someone that is. The people that are currently running it are not capable, they have proven that. They have sat here and lied. They said that they're not firing the volunteers. How can you send a letter saying you have to be rehired if you aren't fired? I mean, I'm, it's, some common sense needs to be used by the people here. There needs to be a board reenacted to overlook this animal shelter if you're not going to get rid of it. I mean, because really at this point, you guys should get rid of it, you're not capable. You haven't proven that you're capable, you can't run the police department, you can't run the dog shelter. You have a lot of problems that you need to address and you need to step up and take care of them.
They can give a legal business if they're licensed.
There's, there's a whole lot of problems here. Somebody needs to step up and do something, please.
Thank you, Mr. Dewing.
Next speaker, Tashonda Trup, followed by Natasha Trup.
He dropped me, I said it right there.
Sorry?
My name is Coffey Wright.
You're not, you didn't sign in.
Did you, I did sign in.
No, ma'am, you're not.
Oh, yes, I did.
You're at the very end, ma'am.
Okay, okay, because he went before me, will we go ahead or wait?
No, you have to wait, I'm afraid, Ms. Williams.
Okay, I can wait, I got it.
Here she is, getting titled to her turn.
Okay, I'll wait.
Thank you.
Tashonda.
Tashonda Trup.
Good evening, Ms. Trup.
Good evening. My name is Tashonda Trup and I live in Pine Line. I started this journey- I started this journey as humble as I could. When everyone was telling me that this council was not going to help me and was not going to do anything, I stayed as positive as I could. I felt like I was coming to this government for help, and the only way to get a positive outcome, I would have to be positive and humble. Eight months, 250 days later, reality is starting to set in. My child is gone and never coming back, and he died because our government could care less about inmates. It's finally starting to set in. After four deaths this year, this county, this council still don't get it. So, now I stand before you angry, because after 250 days, all this council has shown me is that they're more concerned with everything other than the Justice Center. A few weeks ago, I went to the MDOC with a few other mothers and family members who either lost someone or who had someone incarcerated. I chose to take that trip because I felt that this council is not hearing me. I would love to start here at home so that St. Louis County could be the government goal for others, but all your energy is going toward other issues. Meanwhile, this government is falling apart. What's sad is I'm starting to think that the way, that's the way y'all like it. When I came to this, I never wanted a lawsuit. I just wanted somebody charged. Everybody kept saying, including members of this government, the only way to get any justice is to sue. Make them pay. There wasn't justice for me because there was still no accountability. But as I'm learning, lawsuits get your attention. Lawsuits make you talk about it. Lawsuits make you make changes. As I watched the news coverage of the latest lawsuit, I watched Lisa Clancy ask for the resignation of chief, of the chief for his bad behavior. She was pretty clear that there were big concerns regarding culture and inclusion of the police department, but where is the concern about the culture and inclusion at the Justice Center? Did anyone ask for Julia's resignation? She had questionable behavior. She allowed inmates to be abused on her watch. She allowed stolen chicken wings to be sold at the jail on her watch. Imagine that. Stolen items being sold at a jail where people are being punished for the exact same crime. So, now I look forward to the lawsuit. Matter of fact, I welcome it. Maybe then you'll ask for her resignation. Maybe then you'll listen and be willing to change some things, because as of now, I don't see St. Louis County getting any better. Because if you call multimillion-dollar lawsuits getting better, then Lord help us.
Thank you, Ms. Trup.
My name is Natasha Trup, and I live in the county. As I stand here today, 10 days, my nephew will turn 21. She said that somebody told her that the government would help, that would be me. I told her, "All of y'all was fake that was up here. The government is the biggest Ponzi scheme. Everybody holds not accountable for nothing because everybody knows nothing. Everybody sits on boards, everybody got excuses to why it can't be done." When I leave here today, I'll be rushed again to say, "Why we can't get the things done here?" I'm on boards, but I have no power. What are your purpose? You got officers running rogue, you got correctionals officers running rogue, but I understand why they run and roll. Y'all ain't paying nobody. See, the culture that you're submitting, y'all sit here, what, y'all come twice a week, something like that? Y'all barely work for $22,000 a year. And they work for under 50, but they work every day, though. But we're paying them legal analysts that don't know nothing because they ain't telling y'all nothing, because y'all ain't doing nothing. So, that's $70,000 that's wasted. Y'all steady paying our lawsuits. Y'all steady allowing this kind of culture to keep going on. I heard you asking questions about animals. Don't get me wrong, I've got my dog. She's my companion. That's my best friend. But at the same token, my nephew was my loved one. Y'all euthanizing animals and humans. Why? Because they're poor and black? Because, see, y'all, the people that died over there that was white, they was poor, so they considered black by association because they're poor. But if one of y'all rich white folks' kids, Clancy U., or any of y'all kids had died over there, it'd be heads rolling. But ain't nobody heads rolling. Ain't nothing that's going on because it ain't the rich part of the white folks. I ain't talking about the white, poor people or blacks that's lumped up with us because they're poor. I'm talking about all of y'all people. Why? I want to see one of y'all people go over there and die, and I want to see what you're going to do. Yeah, Clancy, you went up and said for Bellmore, but you ain't called for nobody over there.
Please direct your comments to the chair.
I am. I'm driving through to all of y'all. If everybody's up there, I can talk to everybody. If you don't even want to be talked to, then they shouldn't be here. Okay? So, don't tell me only talk to you if all y'all sitting up there.
We have 30 seconds.
Now, I have 30 seconds. Like I said, Clancy, at the end of the day, spoke for Bellmore. She puts housing, but not in y'all rich folks' neighborhood. Only where us black folks, they keep topping us on top of each other. As the man said, "The master," and we got the master helpers. So, when you get through, I can talk to whoever, and you're not my master. Because what you fail to understand, we're not our ancestors, and like my sister wanted to go the right way with y'all, I'm about the wrong way. It need to be protested, brought on, some kind of cornage on the county for y'all to understand.
Thank you, Ms. Trup.
Next speaker, Phil Duval, followed by Claudine Murphy.
Phil Duval? Reverend.
Good evening, County Executive Page to Presiding Officer Dragan, to the council. I was prepared to share some of the changes in the Justice Center, but just like when I go to church, I may have a prepared sermon, but the spirit will move me to change it. I'm speaking tonight for two Lamarves. One is Lamar who was killed in the city of St. Louis by the St. Louis City Police after he was caught on tape by the officer saying, "I'm going to kill this MF, don't you know." The whole world got to hear, see, and watch him kill Lamar. Now, I'm sitting here on an advisory board, and I thank you for that appointment, but as I shared when I took the appointment, you will not change me. I'm sitting here thinking about her Lamar. Her Lamar that would have been 21-years-old coming this next Thursday. And something that is resonating, as I do respect the police, but as a proponent for Prop P, we still don't have two men in a car. We still don't have the video cameras. We still don't have, and we can talk about budgetary and this and that, the accountability on police officers is zero. So, when we ask certain questions, you're hearing us saying, "We feel like you're tone deaf." I don't know how many more examples that we have to give until we take to the streets. And then everybody wants to then have an opinion about why we're in the streets. Y'all call us to the streets. Y'all call us into this building. We have other things to do on a Tuesday night, but if you sit stoic, say nothing, and give us soundbites, you're going to keep us coming in here. And when there is no decision made at the top, when is there? It's like collusion. You know why, you know, Chief, I look at you from time to time? It's because I know that you had been the chief, and I know you had a culture that you tried your best to address. But whoever came behind you now has taken up this culture and has hidden all of the nasty, dirty secrets that are now being exposed. I don't understand. If we wanted Julia Childress gone, and she's still over there.
30 seconds, Reverend.
Don't keep Bellmore over here.
That's right.
Like you're keeping Julia Childress over there. Lastly, Lieutenant Colonel Daw, who's been leading these changes over in the jail without support. I'm not saying no support, but without very little support. And now he's sitting over there, after being the community champion that he is, make Lieutenant Colonel Daw the chief and change the culture in the county.
Next speaker, Claudine Murphy, followed by Kira Braxton.
Ms. Murphy, Claudine Murphy. Claudine Murphy. Very well, Ms. Braxton.
The financial challenges that 4,200 county employees face every year is, "Do I go or do I stay?" Then the question is, "I'm too close to my rule of 80 to walk away. I'm in too deep." Most longtime county employees will reach the rule of 80 between 50 and 55 years of age. I hate to tell you, but for a lot of people, that's next year. In the next one of four years, all of that experience will leave St. Louis County. It will leave St. Louis County with a nice number of people coming and going, because after all, St. Louis County government is now the new training ground for all millennials. I'm an accountant, so let's put this financial challenge into perspective. Since my career here at St. Louis County, I have $15,952.80 in lost wages. By December 14th of this year, even with the Prop P increase, I will have $7,175.60 in lost wages. According to merit increases, I should be earning $53,393 a year. Instead, I'm stuck at $46,000. If I were getting my merit increases, which are due to me, I would top out in 2024 with seven years till my rule of 80. I could live with that, but not this. If this continues, the county will cost me, by my rule of 80, $93,189.40 in lost wages. Meanwhile, and I'm going to put them in here, we have a corrupt pay-to-pay employee, Sean Rhodey, over at Justice Services, making $90,000 after getting a $25,000 pay-to-pay bonus from Steve Stinger, special pay increase. He's paid to pass out candy at job fairs and watch Facebook and Twitter. That's his job. The truth is, we are your plan. The county employees are your plan. You have balanced the budget on the backs of St. Louis County employees for long enough. Council, it's time to come up with a new plan. Reinvest merit increases. That's what we work for. That's what's due to us. I'm asking all 4,200 county employees to count up how much they have in lost wages. And then I need them to get here and to let you all know, the time is up. We sat quiet for 10 years. If my house is on fire, I'm putting that fire out first.
30 seconds, Ms. Braxton.
Not the city, not the trolley, not the convention center, or the zoo. You all have finally broken the camera's backs. See you next Tuesday.
Thank you, Ms. Braxton.
Barbara Chikirio, followed by Don Fitz.
Barbara Chikirio? Evening, Ms. Chikirio.
Good evening. I'm Barb Chikirio. I live in University City, and I'm here tonight to discuss or to have my, express my feelings about what happened with Melissam Williams and Officer Newberry. The theme tonight for many speakers has been accountability, accountability, accountability. And my concern is that I believe that all public employees should be held accountable for actions that might be illegal, unethical, or just plain wrong. Those individuals will continue with their unacceptable behavior if they're not held accountable. Officer Newberry behaved in a manner that was not only unprofessional, it was wrong on so many levels. To bully, intimidate, and terrify anyone, especially a law-abiding 63-year-old woman who is returning from a visit to see her hospitalized son. Officer Newberry's actions were racist and sexist, and he needs to be held accountable for what he has done. To not hold him accountable gives other police officers, who might be inclined to act in such a manner, the impression that they can get away with this. It also makes all police officers look bad.
That's right.
And I don't believe they're all bad. So, with that being said, to me, it's a time to put an end to this kind of conduct from those who are supposed to be protecting us. And one way to do that is to fire Officer Newberry.
Thank you, Ms. Trup.
Next speaker, Don Fitz, followed by Heather Henderson.
Good evening, Mr. Fitz. My name is Don Fitz. I live in St. Louis County. I was the 2016 Missouri Green Party candidate for governor. And one of the reasons I ran with the Green Party is that the Green Party has always opposed police misconduct, has always opposed police brutality, and has always opposed police murder. And I am here to speak in favor of the firing of Officer Nicholas Newberry for the behavior that he showed from Melissam Williams. Now, I'm not going to repeat the details of that because those have been covered by so many people here tonight. I do want to say that I was, that I worked for 25 years as a research psychologist at St. Louis State Hospital. And it was not unusual to see a psychologist misbehave and do something inappropriate, sexually abuse a client. And every time that that happened, I supported the firing of that psychologist, but because I believed, I was not insulted as a psychologist for a person to be disciplined for misconduct. I felt that helped the psychology, in order to remove somebody who had done something inappropriate. And to allow a person to stay in their position, to allow somebody to stay in their position after abusive behavior is to encourage everybody else who has that same position to show that same abusive behavior. Many things have been called for, such as sensitivity training for police officers. Now, I've studied a whole lot of therapeutic interventions, and I can guarantee you that the single most therapeutic thing that you can do for police abuse is to fire somebody and let everybody else who has that position of power to see that as an example. So, that's why I said that the best thing that we could do for the St. Louis County Police is to fire Newberry.
Thank you, Ms. Trup.
Next speaker, Heather Henderson.
Madam clerk, make sure you get the clock.
Followed by Tom Sullivan.
Make sure you get the clock. Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Henderson.
Hi, good evening. Yes. There you go. Thank you. Oh, here, let me lower this. Hi, I'm Heather Henderson. I reside in Saint Anne, and I am a volunteer for the St. Louis County Animal Care and Control Pet Adoption Center. You've heard a lot of conversations about the reboot. I'm not going to talk about that, but what I would like to talk to you about is the situation where dogs are not being spayed and neutered. The large dogs, the dogs that are over 50 pounds, are unable to be accommodated by the third-party service that county has contracted with to do spay and neuter, since we don't have any vets on staff. So, we have these dogs over 50 pounds, and they're languishing in their kennels, and some of them have adoption applications. They can go home as soon as this occurs. I recorded their names so that maybe this could really hit home with you folks. One of the dogs' names is Moon. One is Bonnie. There's Diesel, who happened to be on the Channel 4 news tonight. I don't know if you guys, you were probably here at the 6 o'clock news. Mallow, Milky Way, Money, and Professor. These are dogs who have applications. They can go home as soon as someone can figure out a way to spay or neuter them. In addition to these dogs, there's equal about 15 more that are over 50 pounds that are not spayed and neutered, that are still going to be languishing there. Opal, Heaven, Desi, Cordelia, Walnut, Duke, Meatball, Roland, Babe Ruth, Tatum, Spark, Goliath, and Eddie. Those are real dogs. They're real dogs that are waiting. So, I'm imploring the council to please explore options, find a way to get the large dogs, those are over 50 pounds, so that they can find their people, so that they can go home.
Transport them.
That's right. Volunteers would be happy to transport them.
Why don't you just let volunteers do the whole job?
Let, please.
There is vouchers county has available. For if I were a person with a dog in my home that was my dog, I could make an appointment with. I could make an appointment with the vet, I could go get a voucher, and it would be a very reasonable cost. So I don't understand why dogs that are under the custody. Thank you. The custody and care of St. Louis County don't have that option available to them. So I'm just asking you to please find a solution, fix it, find a way to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson.
Next speaker, Tom Sullivan, followed by Donna Slummer.
Tom Sullivan?
Good evening, Tom.
Good evening. Mr. Presiding Officer, we had two nominees to the St. Louis County Police Board, but citizens have been shut out from obtaining their resumes and applications. Their right to express any opinion they might have had on the documents were violated. Also, I recently made a request for the correspondence of Barbara Fraser from September the first on. She is the education liaison for the county executive's office, but she has never seen or heard from. I was told by county councilor Beth Orwick that the estimated cost would be two-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars for the information I requested. So much for that open government that Sam Page promised. At last week's meeting, two speakers expressed their support for the Loop Trolley. What they and other trolley supporters should do is start a fund that come up with two-hundred thousand dollars. The trolley needs right away. Let them put their money up if they think it's a good idea. Over the weekend, the Wall Street Journal published an article on the Loop Trolley titled, "In St. Louis, A Streetcar Named Quagmire." Now the whole country knows what a boondoggle the trolley is. After the nearly twenty-million-dollar verdict against St. Louis County, county citizens could see their dysfunctional government on full display. Many people blamed county councilor Beth Orwick for letting the matter go to court. She blamed the police board. The police board blamed her. County executive blamed county lawyers for some of the arguments they made. The county councilor also blamed her lawyers for that, saying they didn't follow her orders, which didn't seem believable. This was discussed on Downey Brook last week. Bill McClellan said he tended not to believe Sam Page and Beth Orwick. Welcome to the club, Bill. And the county executive said, "Change must start at the top." Most everyone took that to mean the police chief should go. But then Sam Page went to the police foundation breakfast, made out with big-money guys who backed the chief, and said he not only supports the chief, but calls him a leader. A post-dispatch editorial stated the obvious. It looked like political expediency. It was backpedaling, said an article in a call. I think this council made a mistake when you hurriedly picked Sam Page as county executive. I am glad county voters will have at least one other choice next year for county executive. Thank you, Mr. Trekkus.
Next speaker, Donna Slummer, followed by Angie Zorich.
Evening, Ms. Slummer.
Good evening. My name is Donna Slummer. I live in Overland. Is it Overland? I'm merely a concerned, tax-paying, animal advocate. Mr. Trekkus, your comment to a journalist was proof that you all are not listening to us. You stated, and I quote, "When you have any group of people that are entrenched and refuse to even consider rethinking how something is done and demand their way and only their way, this is what we are confronted with." I believe Mrs. Ms. Spring Schmidt and her staff have done everything they could to adopt the recommendations in the audit, and they should proceed. Mr. Trekkus, you are so wrong. We don't want our way. We want what is best for these animals. And for them, I'm sorry you are missing our point. I'm sorry you are not feeling the passion of these volunteers. Secondly, have you read the audit? If so, I don't believe you could say the shelter has done everything that can be done to adopt the recommendations. And you say they should proceed. Proceed with what? All we hear are circles being repeated. Then, when you hear the acting director's updates, you act like you are satisfied, so that we too will be satisfied. And we are far from satisfied. These volunteers, blood, sweat, and tears are in that place. They, the animals they love are in that place. And it's not getting better. It's getting worse. What will it take for you to see that? You sit there and are satisfied with the words that we are making progress. You think twenty-seven accomplished goes out of one-hundred-and-forty-eight is satisfactory, but those twenty-seven accomplished goes are anything but accomplished. Counsel, take for example, staff is told to check kennels for feces every fifteen minutes. So this is marked as an accomplished go. But it's not happening. This is just one of many examples. Advisory board convenes in January? Until then, there will be no transparency. How is this progress? So to correct you, Mr. Trekkus, it's not our way. We are fighting for. It's the humane way. And until those animals. Thank you. And until those animals are receiving their five freedoms, we will not go away. They don't have a voice, so you will hear ours for however long it takes.
Thank you, Ms. Slummer.
Next speaker, Angie Zorich, followed by Lori Klingbeal.
Evening, Ms. Zorich.
Good evening. Angie Zorich, Oakville, Missouri. First of all, I'd like to say that this Thursday is the last day for the volunteers at the animal shelter, and I am very concerned about what's going to transpire after that. I mean, we don't ask you questions, or maybe sometimes, I don't expect you to give me an answer, but I think that, I'm really curious to see how this plays out. I think it's going to be tragically in a lot of ways. And I wish that we communicated with each other so that this doesn't happen. Those people have been dedicated to those animals for a very long time, and I just, I hate to see what next week's going to bring. But I guess we'll find out. I also want to say that I do not hate the police. If anybody here on this panel thinks that I hate the police, I don't. I honestly don't. I don't hate you. You were chief of police when my house was raided. What I think we're hearing in this room is that accountability. I mean, Officer Rink illegally got a search warrant to search my house. My dog was shot. It was a really traumatic experience, okay? I, whatever, it's resolved now, but it's really not. I mean, Officer Rink's still a police officer. He's still harassing people in St. Louis County. Five SWAT officers showed up in federal court and lied and got caught lying, and I don't see any accountability. Newberry, he's still a police officer. All of the officers lied in federal court. In my case, they lied a couple of weeks ago. You've got a huge, huge, I don't think you're going to pay the bill. I think there's probably another plan. Hopefully, you can work something out. But I don't, I don't hate the police, and I appreciate mothers standing up for their sons. But I, you know, I think that the statistics show what's really happening. We've lost ten officers in the line of duty since the inception of the St. Louis County Police Department. We've lost ten. How many unarmed people have been shot and killed this year? How about last month? I mean, let's put this into perspective. And we know that it's more, probably more young black men, but it's, you know, I'm white. I live in Oakville. And my house got raided because I didn't pay a gas bill. So what Natasha's referring to, you know, I know there is an element of white, I don't know.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Zorich.
I just think that all of these groups, animal, people, all of us need to, I think, be nicer to each other because we're all, we're all having issues, and you guys need to communicate with all of these groups. Why not work it out? You could have worked my thing out a long time ago. Apparently, you could have worked out this twenty-million-dollar deal a long time ago.
Thank you, Ms. Zorich.
Next speaker, Lori Klingbeal, followed by Hannah Mangamori.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
My name is Lori Klingbeal. I currently volunteer at the St. Louis Animal County Care and Control because I believe that from the time I applied and that I would make a difference. And I still believe that to this day despite what's going on. I stand behind and support fully everything, the people in blue, the officers and the animal control volunteers. I was there on eleven-two-nineteen. Doors opened at seven-thirty. That morning, they opened at eight. I ventured to guess that they didn't stay open a half hour later. So again, volunteers were scrambling at a half hour behind. When I came in there, there were many kennels filled, six kennels to be exact, filled with waste on beds, floors smeared, piles. It's my understanding they were short-staffed. So I started in the three-hundred area, checked the log, and the one thing that concerned me was between five-thirty and six, ten dogs got out at the same time by the same person. Ten-dog playground? Awesome. How does that happen? It was time for me to leave. I noticed there was quite a bit of poop in kennels. I've never had a problem with staff. I've never had, I've never had any instances with them. I asked the one overstaffed, overworked staff person to clean the kennels. She was glad to do it, and I think they're. Lisa was great in helping cleaning kennels as well. My question is, where are the supervisors and the management in the midst of all this chaos? Why are they not there and there helping with this shortage of staff? And I understand one of the council members has an upcoming volunteer event. I certainly hope they don't see this, and I can venture to guess that they're not going to see this. Another concern I have is why are potential adopters coming up to visit the dogs they plan to adopt? Sounds kind of backwards to me. Why? Because they are unaltered and they can't take them home yet. No vet on site. We know that the van can only support or do dogs fifty pounds and under. There are dogs that are over the weight limit. I'm a trusted volunteer. Up until Thursday, I've got tons of vacation time. I will drive. You pre-approve a vet, I will drive the dogs. I will take two days off, three days off, and get them altered. And so now that county's full.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Klingbeal.
And these unaltered dogs who have homes, going to get more amped up. So with them being full, that, they're going to look to euthanize. Who's going to call the family and explain to them, "Sorry, the dog you were interested in, you came in to visit, has been put down"? As it is, management wants to say it's volunteers working against them. I think management is actually their own worst enemy and working against themselves.
Time's up, Ms. Klingbeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Hannah Mangamori, followed by Anthony Shaheed.
Hannah Mangamori? Good evening, Ms. Mangamori.
I thank the council for this time. I'm Hannah Mangamori. I plead the council to make some legislation to stop caste corruption in USA and repair the damage done. I've given the names of our caste people, Mr. Raguputhuri and Mr. Rajesh Pamalapati. They're safe in India with families, and US law cannot punish them. I am a caste Indian. I'm not here to blame or seek revenge on caste supremacists. I seek a rescue mission to protect our caste ladies, like my own sister, whose husband told me in two thousand and fourteen, he helps his employees use fake resumes and asked me to sign a paper. I refused and told him his mom was a prayerful Christian, and as her son, he should defeat caste corruption. Later, I told my sister, who couldn't believe it, until I told the police. She then paid hundred thousand dollars as down payment on a house solely owned by her so she wouldn't support or enjoy caste corruption spoils. I still visit her and play with my niece, and her husband is still polite to me, but still has not repaired the caste corruption damage, which I see in many of my Hindu ladies who do not have church friends like I did to avoid caste corruption. I mean, they are in a very hard position. And I please, and I'm glad that you have the majority on the caste, on the county council. I mean, I don't mean the Democrats. I never, I would never divide Americans as Democrats and Republicans. I mean the women, because you give me hope. Because this caste corruption has gone without being punished, caste people are breaking US laws and getting away while US is diverted by protests against two-percent-wide supremacy. Caste supremacy has grown eighty percent worldwide. And in two thousand and fifteen, you know, it is like the divide-and-rule policy of the caste supremacy. A caste lady, Dr. Anjali Ramkison, in Florida, kicked and abused a castless white male Uber driver and was not even charged. I mean, he kicked, she kicked him, abused him, threw his papers out. It was all over the internet, but no charges made at all. And here we are blaming that white police officer for checking a woman. I mean, it's hard. I was stopped by that too. But in these days of suicide bombings, who could blame a policeman? So I'm saying, please, support the police and do not let our caste laws weaken the power given to the police.
Ms. Mangamori, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Anthony Shaheed, followed by Zaki Barudi.
Good evening, Mr. Shaheed.
So, bottom line is, we got two different worlds we're in, and I'll show you what I mean in just a minute. This is a letter, this is a, from St. Louis Post-Dispatch about when a house were blown up. Believe it or not, it was a white woman's house because they didn't know what they was firebombing. And Stinger and Bellman was a part of it. Y'all know about it, so you ain't got to look like you don't know what it is. They not gone. They didn't have to leave nowhere. Didn't nothing happen to them until they caught Stinger doing the stuff that he normally do. Y'all know Bellman in St. in, 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 in St. Louis County, y'all know he corrupt. You know, Lake Shaw, Lieutenant Colonel Jerry Lake Shaw, been putting drugs and dope on black people in St. Louis City. So you're living in two different worlds. Y'all know that for a fact. Lake Shaw been putting drugs on black folks down there for long. Here's a sister whose husband, for forty years, was a police officer. The same way y'all feel about, y'all been a police officer, your wife. Don't you think she feel the same way? And for somebody to just disrespect her like this on that level? For you to do that, a police wife? And y'all act like y'all can't feel that. You're talking about dogs. But goddamn, I'm talking about a black woman. And I'm telling you, it's dangerous for y'all to keep on fooling with black women like that. They been out, I been out finding they doing nothing to y'all. Y'all ain't got to be in terror. Y'all got some black men behind y'all. Not no black boy. We not they niggas. We some free black men. They been out do nothing to y'all, period, on no level. But I'm just telling you what I'm talking about now. What I see here and how they deal with things, and why I say it's two different worlds, they pledge allegiance to flags. I'm going to show you what I think about this damn flag in my last thirty seconds, what I give a damn about that flag. What I'm tired of is how y'all come out here, and you're just like that damn Stinger. I thought last week, I'm going to tell you, you caught me off guard. I knew you [inaudible]. I really did. Excuse me. I talk the way I, I'm not one of your boys, man. You tell me about what they say. You keep on, you fooling with your all do. The bottom line is, y'all dumb enough. We don't supposed to say a goddamn thing about what we do, what y'all do. We supposed to just come and just kiss y'all butt?
No, sir.
But we ain't doing, I know damn nothing. I'm talking, man, up there, I'm talking. This is my time to talk.
You got thirty seconds left.
I know I got time, thirty-second talk, but the bottom line is, how y'all doing things is the same way it is doing slavery. Ain't nothing changed. So what I think about y'all and y'all damn flag is this right here. This what I think about y'all flag. When y'all stand up, pledge allegiance to the flag. I'm standing on this goddamn flag. I'm going to spin your, send you a long, I'm going to Bellman, fire you. I will have that damn, what's his name?
Your time's up, Mr. Shaheed. Time's up.
Fire Newberry. Thank God you're in the country that allows you to do that.
Fire Newberry.
Go ahead, Mr. Barudi.
See how you started?
Fire Newberry.
You started talking, man. So I'm going to talk back. You don't flex it. You, you, you got the right one to get up to, boy.
Go ahead, Mr. Barudi.
All right, so you know what's happening. You know what y'all need to do. You know what y'all need to do. Y'all need to fire Newberry. Bottom line. And for the ladies, the women that's up here, I have not, I, I, I'm very disappointed that last meeting, after Ms. Williams spoke of her insulting and humiliating experience-
She's lying.
-that you addressed, and I have no problem with the dogs, but you specifically asked about the issue of dogs after she had spoken about her humiliating experience. I want to hear from y'all.
Mr. Barudi.
You need to take a public position, everybody on this council, that that man named, or that boy named Newberry-
Boy.
-needs to be fired. And we've come over and over and over again. Paige, you had said in terms of wanting to have a whole new page in this county.
Be lying.
Then you need to do it. And you need to start, number one, if Belmer has allowed this culture-
Yes.
-to exist-
Yes.
-writing a letter on behalf of someone who is a dope dealer-
Dope dealer.
Dope dealer.
Who has not taken an action to, and acknowledged the humiliation of the system, and does nothing about it on the serious side, and we don't even know what he has done. That's crazy. You are creating, you are creating an environment.
A culture.
You are creating a real tense environment.
What it happened.
So the question becomes, moving forward, what you gonna do? And we come, we have come here so many times to address this issue, and y'all sit stifferly. No kind of response. That's a damn shame. That's shameful. It's criminal. And in that criminality, you need to get rid of Belmer-
Yes.
-you need to get rid of Newberry.
Lake Shaw.
Well, Lake Shaw in the city. It's, 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 it's time for, it's time for this to be perfected again. So again, all I want to say again and again and again. Fire Newberry! Fire Newberry! Fire Newberry! Fire Newberry!
Thank you, Mr. Barudi.
Next speaker, Arnie Deanoff, followed by Coffee Wright.
All right.
Arnie, did he hear you? That's his problem.
Mr. Deanoff.
That's what I meant by that comment. Anywhere else, you'd be in jail by now.
Good evening, Mr. Deanoff.
Good evening, Mr. Trakis, members of council. My name is Arnie CAC Deanoff. I'm a county and state public advocate. And take this to the bank. Here's a fact for this council. Officer Nick Newberry, a resident of St. Peters, Missouri, status recommendation from the executive command staff was to be fired.
Wow!
That's a fact. Now, this was reversed by the Police Board of Commissioners in a political connection with one of the members who knows Mr. Newberry.
Oh, really?
It was reversed, and that's shameful. If you don't believe me, ask commander, ask every commander on the executive command staff, and I think you have some here in the audience. They recommended to the police, Police Board of Commissioners to fire Nick Newberry.
Yes.
It was reversed. Where is Chief John Belmar? Empty seat right up there where he usually sits. Again boycotting the will and not hearing from public testimony of our police state and our unaccountable, unruly, and non-conforming county police department. Acting county clerk, please mark for the record, the chief Belmar, for the third week in a row, is absent from the county council meeting.
Say that.
Credibility, the entire police department and command staff is on the line here. I sat in circuit court a week ago hearing lying and major perjury of top commanders and executive commanders in the cabinet of the police department who lied under oath. I saw and heard this with my own eyes and my own two ears. That's concerning, and I will be visiting with internal affairs, with my own internal affairs complaint.
Say that.
Along with Councilwoman Clancy, I am still calling, as I did a month ago, for the firing and removal of Chief John Belmar. Stop protecting John Belmar. Stop protecting the culture and terrible law enforcement practices that are going on on a daily basis. Are my internal affairs complaints ever going to be investigated? There still has been no contact from internal affairs on the missing sergeant who is down here tonight. Mr. Trakis, or known as ET, who's under investigation for sexual harassment by your administrative assistant? Did it make you feel good last Tuesday to shut down people and belittle us? Did it feel good by calling in the troops and a show of force of police officers?
Thirty seconds, Ms. Barudi.
I called for a change and asked that Angie Zoric run against you, ET, in District Six, and give a real change to the county government. Executive Paige, did you order the recall of Animal Services Volunteers email to four hundred and seventy-three free volunteers? Sam Page, with your unmarked two thousand and nineteen police SUV, police driver, and free gasoline, did you put in just one hour in walking the dogs?
Time is up, Ms. Deanoff.
At the county, uh, county pound. One last thing, Police Board of Commissioners, you have two attorneys, you have three attorneys, which is that.
Your time is up. Time is up.
Last but not least, I guess. All right, I'll make it quick. Everybody pretty much already said what I wanted to say, but I still feel the same. So I second what everybody said in reference to especially my sister, Ms. Williams, okay? What I have to say is, born a black female, gonna die a black female, okay? But you all said you want the police and the citizens to come together, to work together. One day, that Cinderella story may happen, but we, we making work together, but we damn sure ain't gonna sleep together. That ain't gonna happen. So what I'm saying is, we are sick of this BS. Everybody wants accountability. You know what we want. All these mothers out here that are mothers of police officers or whatever, if you don't want your sons and daughters to be treated or looked upon as bad news, then you need to stand up publicly-
Do your comments to the council.
Okay, you, they need to stand up publicly. I'm challenging moms of police officers, stand up publicly to get rid of Officer Newberry, so that way their sons and daughters are not looked upon as the next Officer Newberry. I'm challenging every female up here, every female, black or white, I don't care. I had fifty thousand votes almost when I ran for United States Senate, and most of my voters were white, okay? So every female, if you, if you really got a split between your legs instead of toting a penis, you stand up publicly and make an announcement. This job, you stand up publicly and you-
Watch your language.
Thank you. You stand up publicly and you call for this Officer Newberry to be fired, because it could be you. It could be your mama, your child, your sister, your niece. The black women, I'm ashamed of you, because you haven't came up publicly. We put you all in there. White women, we put you in there too. Don't think that white privilege, that you, it won't happen to you, okay? And if a big black brother was to stop you and did, and do that to you, you would make sure they're fired. But I don't care if you black or white family, when a man violates a woman, our bodies are sacred, okay? And if you don't think your body is sacred, then go along with the okie doke, because you know it's wrong, and you ain't gonna have this job forever, okay? So I'm challenging you all to stand up publicly and say, y'all tired of it, and fight for this man to be fired, so he can stop ruining the reputations of the officers that are supposed to be good, because I ain't seeing a good officer when you go along with the okie doke.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Barudi.
Okay, so that's what I gotta say. My name is Coffee Wright, and goddamn right I said it.
Thank you. That concludes the public forum. Let's please proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number three oh seven, introducing the council-
One moment, please.
I, I want to acknowledge something. It is, it is, I'm not asking for sympathy, but it's, it's really hard every week to sit here and, and to hear what we're hearing and not respond. The pain that is being shared and the pain that I feel in this room is not lost on me. It keeps me up at night. It really does. I, what I, what I, what I, what I'm taking away from this is I need to do a better job of communicating with people how I feel about this, but more importantly, what I'm planning to do to try to make change happen. And I will tell you, I don't think, I don't think the system is broken. I think the system wasn't designed for everybody to be treated as equal.
Let Councilwoman speak.
This is a system that is working as intended, because it's a system that was designed on premises of inequality, and that's what we're up against.
Anything else?
That's it. You're treating us like niggas, all of you. You're treating us like niggas.
Let's proceed with introduction of bills, please.
Bill number three oh seven, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept grant funds of up to nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, appropriating the same for support of the Home Asthma Assessment and Education Program, and authorizing execution of necessary documents. Bill number three oh eight, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway, an ordinance changing the name of Ram's, Ram's Way to Athletic Drive. Bill number three oh nine, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, an ordinance amending-
Proceed, please.
An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty by repealing and reenacting Section One pertaining to contracts with hospitals located in St. Louis County and the city of St. Louis to provide unreimbursed care to county residents without insurance and their staff.
Fire Newberry! 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 Stand up, it could be you. Fire Newberry! Fire Newberry! Fire Newberry!
Proceed, man, for-
Bill number three ten, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the general fund for support of hospital costs for inmates at the Justice Center who are transported for medical treatment. Bill number three eleven, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-six by repealing and reenacting Section Two pertaining to a grant from the Office of National Drug Control Policy for support of the multi-jurisdictional drug, drug task force. Bill number three twelve, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, an ordinance amending Title Twelve, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance as nineteen seventy-four is amended, Traffic Code, by enacting and adding two new provisions to Schedule Six. Bill number three thirteen, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, an emergency ordinance authorizing the county council to contract with Lewis Rice LLC in connection with representation of St. Louis County in the matter of the lawsuit style Will Haber versus St. Louis County and declaring an emergency. Bill number three fourteen, introduced by Councilmember Harder, an ordinance amending Title Six, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance as nineteen seventy-four, as amended Public Health and Welfare by adding and enacting a new chapter to be known as the Creighton Sellers Licensing Code. Mr. Presiding Officer, that is all the bills.
Thank you very much. Please proceed with perfection.
Bill number twenty, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold. Bill number twenty is held.
Substitute bill number one for bill number two eighty-four, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy and Walton Gray.
Please hold.
Bill number two eighty-four is held.
Bill number two ninety-seven, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move to perfect bill number two ninety-seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Bill number two ninety-seven is perfected.
Bill number two ninety-eight, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move to perfect bill number two ninety-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill two ninety-eight is perfected.
Bill number two ninety-nine, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect bill number two ninety-nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill two ninety-nine is perfected.
Bill number three hundred, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect bill number three hundred.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number three hundred is perfected.
Bill number three oh one, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move to perfect bill number three oh one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number three oh one is perfected.
Bill number three oh two, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move to perfect bill number two, three oh two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number three oh two is perfected.
Bill number three oh three, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to perfect bill number three oh three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number three oh three is perfected.
Bill number three oh four, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move to perfect bill number three oh four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number three oh four is perfected.
Bill number three oh five, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move to perfect bill number three oh five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number three oh five is perfected.
Bill number three oh six, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move to perfect bill number three oh six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number three oh six is perfected. At this time, I move to advance bill number three thirteen to the perfection order of business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Bill number three thirteen is advanced to the perfection order of business. That being the case, I move to perfect bill number three thirteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number three thirteen is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number two ninety-two, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move for final passage of bill number two ninety-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill two ninety-two, there are seven ayes.
Very well, bill number two ninety-two is finally passed.
Bill number, I mean, I'm sorry, substitute bill number one for bill number two ninety-three, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move for final passage of substitute bill number one for bill number two ninety-three.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on substitute bill number one for bill number two ninety-three, there are seven ayes.
Substitute bill number one for bill number two ninety-three is finally passed.
Bill number two ninety-four, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move for final passage of bill number two ninety-four.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill 294, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 294 is finally passed.
Bill number 295, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for final passage of bill number 295.
Second.
Second, sorry.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill 295, there are seven ayes.
Bill 295 is finally passed.
Bill number 296, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 296.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill 296, there are seven ayes.
Bill 296 is finally passed. Before we proceed, I move to advance bill number 313 to the final passage order of business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, bill number 313 is advanced to the final passage order of business.
Shall I read it for final passage?
Bill number 313, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, right?
Right.
Okay, so I move for final passage of bill number 313.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill 313, there are seven ayes.
Very well, bill number 313 is finally passed. Resolutions.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have two resolutions this evening. Resolution number 1, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for adoption of resolution number 1.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on resolution 1, there are seven ayes.
Very well, resolution number 1 is adopted.
Resolution number 2, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Please read the resolution.
Yes, sir. A resolution, whereas St. Louis Lambert International Airport, the airport, is one of the most important portals for our region's economic growth and tourism, and is instrumental in allowing local companies of all sizes to compete both nationally and internationally, and in improving the quality of life in the St. Louis region. And whereas, while ownership of the airport is vested in the city of St. Louis, it is located wholly within the boundaries of St. Louis County. And whereas, the airport is an important regional asset serving the travel needs of people from throughout eastern Missouri, including residents of the city of St. Louis, St. Louis County, Jefferson County, and St. Charles County. And whereas, the city of St. Louis has earnestly solicited and received for many decades the support of St. Louis County for the preservation, operations, and expansions of the airport, most notably in the 1970s, when there was a proposal to construct a new airport in the Waterloo, Columbia, Illinois area. And whereas, the development of the airport necessarily requires the cooperation of the people of St. Louis County, as well as the approval by the St. Louis County government of development projects on and around the airport property and the road and access networks of which it is a part. And whereas, the cooperation heretofore between the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County has been based on the realization that the potential benefits and opportunities of the airport are not limited to the city of St. Louis, and the potential detrimental impacts of uninformed or non-inclusive decisions are not confined to the city of St. Louis, but materially and substantially affect St. Louis County and the many counties and entities in the heartland of the United States. And whereas, there is no disputing that the vast and overwhelming majority of the people, businesses, and institutions that could suffer from the potential detrimental impacts of the decision-making regarding the airport reside and are located outside of the city of St. Louis, and are the same people, businesses, and institutions whose support has been continually solicited by the city of St. Louis for many decades. And whereas, the current policy of the city of St. Louis to pursue privatization of such a critical element of regional economic growth and quality of life without ensuring that the interest of St. Louis County and all those affected by such a decision is unwise, unwarranted, and detrimental to the future of the St. Louis region. And whereas, the current policy of the city of St. Louis to pursue only its own interests regarding such a critical regional asset in complete disregard of all interests outside of the borders of the city of St. Louis represents a reversal of longstanding policy, as well as an abandonment of the regional cooperation and support which have maintained the competitiveness of the airport and its role in the viability of the entire St. Louis region and beyond. And whereas, it is the goal of the St. Louis County government to ensure that the interests of the people of St. Louis County and all those affected by such decisions regarding potential privatization of the airport be taken into account and addressed. And whereas, as the subject of regional collaboration and cooperation now dominates the public discourse and serious discussions and proposals seek to identify and implement ways for the St. Louis region to work more cooperatively for the benefit of present and future generations, the current actions by the city of St. Louis regarding the airport are contrary and adverse to the wishes of the people throughout the region and beyond, that St. Louis County and the city of St. Louis take every measure to cooperate for a more prosperous and inclusive St. Louis region. And whereas, the administration of the city of St. Louis has been conducting closed, non-transparent studies within the objective of determining whether the airport should be privatized, and such studies have been conducted without any public scrutiny or input. And whereas, this secretive effort to privatize the airport is being entirely funded by a St. Louis-area billionaire who has reportedly been paying his handpicked consultants, Grow Missouri, First Rule, and the Fly 314 Coalition of Advisors, upwards of $800,000 per month for many months, without any consideration as to whether the interests of said billionaire are consistent with the interests of the people who will suffer the consequences if such a decision to privatize the airport turns out to be unwise. And whereas, no bills or invoices detailing the nature of the services performed and amount of time spent by these handpicked consultants to earn $800,000 per month have been made available to the public. And whereas, while the so-called Airport Advisory Working Group, including Grow Missouri, First Rule, and the Fly 314 Coalition, have attempted to create the illusion of transparency by ostensibly publishing copies of meeting minutes and documents, these minutes reflect only the public portion of meetings, and no minutes have been published of closed-session meetings where it is likely that all substantive business of this consortium of consultants have been discussed and decided. And whereas, no documents, meeting minutes, economic impact studies,